City Council meeting of the 25th of October 2023. If I just like to remind everybody that in accordance with council's code of meeting practice, other than the public forum section, this meeting is being live streamed. This afternoon, the prayer of council will be read by Father Anthony Morgan from the St George and Prince Tadros Coptic Orthodox Church. Please stand.
Good afternoon, everyone. Acknowledgement of country. Before we begin proceedings, we'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present, the Kabragool clan of Darug Nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Darug World and Darug Nations. Affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Today, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nations, the future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those who associated with government in Liverpool. Almighty God, thank you for our life, our health, and the opportunity to serve within the local government of Liverpool. Send your spirit to touch the hearts of our leaders and down the spirit of wisdom on our mayor, councillors and all the staff that serve at Liverpool City Council with the familiar words, "The Lord bless you and keep you; the Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you; the Lord lift up his countenance upon you and give you peace." Accept the goodness that our council strives for and its decisions it makes for the greater goodness of the city of Liverpool. Inspire leaders to increase the prosperity of which whom they represent. Grant each member talents by which they multiply their fruits. May we please you, our God, this day and hear us, Almighty God. Amen.
Please be seated. Thank you, Father Anthony, for your kind blessings. We have two councillors who are attending online today, councillor Carnib and councillor Goodman. Can I have somebody move that they be allowed? Move councillor Caliander Seconded, councillor Amun. Councillor Goodman, if I could just ask you to pop your camera on, please. Do we have any apologies today? No. There are no condolence motions to be read.
Mr Mayor, yep.
Sorry. Councillor Haddad?
The mayor, is there an apology?
The mayor will be here shortly.
Deputy Mayor, I would like to move a condolences motion, please.
Yes, go ahead, councillor Amun.
I would like to move a condolences motion for the children that have passed since the 7th of October in the current conflict. And I would like to hold a one moment silence, please.
I'm happy to second that motion, deputy mayor.
Seconded councillor Caliander, if I could ask everybody to stand for a moment's silence, please. Thank you, everybody. If there are no other condolence motions, I'd like to ask for confirmation of the minutes from the meeting held on the 27th of September 2023.
Move that way.
Move councillor Green, seconded councillor Rhodes, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. Are there any declarations of interest?
Yes, bear with me. If anyone's got any others, they can go first.
Councillor Rhodes.
You go first. Oh, you haven't got any? Yes, okay. I'll bring them up as they come.
Okay, no problem. And just make sure that you fill out the appropriate paperwork.
Yep.
Thank you. I'd like to move into the public forum section of the meeting now, so if I could call upon Mr Peter Whitney to... And this session will be coordinated by our director, Mr Portelli.
So, we've got some slides, so if you can just share those, that'd be good.
Can I just ask you to speak up a little bit, please?
Sure. Can you hear me better now?
A bit, Larissa, a bit more would be better. We're just hearing you. Yep, please.
It is better? I've just turned the volume up on my end.
Can you hear me okay as well? Or is it quiet?
Both of you are a bit quiet, so either you need to bring your microphones closer to you or we need you to really raise your volume, sorry. We'll try and raise it at this end as well, if we can raise the volume at our end as well.
Okay, yeah. Just stop me if you can't hear.
Yeah, much better, much better.
That's better, thank you.
Okay, I've got the mic right on my mouth. So, yeah, good afternoon, everyone. So, before I start, I'd just like to thank council for inviting Craig and myself to this meeting. I think it's a really good opportunity to get together to brief you on the outcomes of the audit and provide an opportunity to ask any questions. So, we just moved to next slide. We basically completed the audit of the financial statements and you'll be pleased to hear that we do plan to issue an unqualified audit opinion, which is the clean audit opinion. So, first of all, I'll just run through the conduct report and that details council's performance. And then Craig will talk through the key areas of focus of the audit and the audit outcomes. So, we start with the performance ratios. So, you'll be aware that OLG prescribes six performance ratios, which are audited and they're included within the financial statements of council. So, Liverpool council exceeded the benchmark for four out of the six ratios. So, the two that weren't met were the own source operating revenue ratio and the rates and outstanding charges ratio. So, with the own source operating revenue ratio, this wasn't met due to an increase in grants and contributions. So, council didn't generate enough own source revenue to the degree to meet OLG's benchmark. In terms of the rates and annual charges outstanding percentage, rate payers continue to experience difficulties in terms of paying the rates on time, and that's due to economic factors and cost of living pressures. Next slide. So, this slide is the income statement. So, this basically illustrates the movement in key items within the income statement. So, you can see there the rates and annual charges revenue increased by seven million, which is largely in line with the rate peg. The grants and contributions revenue increased by 33 million, and that's mainly due to increase in developer contributions and grants received for infrastructure and childcare. So, the operating results you'll see is a surplus of 146 million, which is 38 million higher compared to the prior year, and that was mainly due to increase in grants and contributions and investment income. And if you strip away the capital grants and contributions, then the net operating result was a surplus of 535K. So, if we move on to next slide, so this is the cash and investments. So, council's total cash investments was 452 million, which is 17 million lower than last year. So, that's mainly due to additional payments for infrastructure property, plant and equipment and repayment of borrowings. So, the external restrictions and internal allocations, you will see there that it's remained pretty steady compared to the prior year. I'll now pass on to Craig and he'll talk about the key areas of focus and the order outcomes.
Thanks, Larissa, and good afternoon, everybody. Yeah, so there's five key topics which really represent the key areas of audit focus that we addressed as part of the audit this year. As Larissa mentioned, all the issues have been resolved to our satisfaction and we are in a position to sign an unqualified clean audit opinion this year. But maybe I'll just step through some of the key points. So, perhaps if I take the first two topics together, so it's really to do with the comprehensive valuation of land under roads and other infrastructure assets, and also the indexation of the other assets which are held at fair value. So, as always, that's a key area of audit focus. There's quite a bit of judgment involved in valuing the assets at fair value. In terms of the comprehensive valuation, there were some challenges as we dealt with the valuer, who is actually valuing some of the properties, but we were very pleased that council were able to assist with that process and all the issues were resolved to our satisfaction. We also looked at some of the indexation rates that were applied to the other land and buildings, and we were certainly satisfied that the judgments adopted by management were appropriate. The third topic on the list there is to do with Liverpool Civic Place, and clearly that's a significant capital project that's been undertaken by council this year. And in terms of the work that we perform, we've certainly done some of the audit testing there around the capitalisation of costs to make sure that the costs incurred were appropriately accounted for, and happy to report that there was no issues that arose from that work. The next topic there is in relation to impairment for contaminated land and the accounting for remediation costs. So, again, this was really an area that we focused on as part of our work and there was no material findings to report. The final topic relates to the area of IT controls, really as it relates to the finance system, and we also look at cybersecurity. So, in terms of some of the IT areas, there were some minor control findings that came to our attention, which have been reported back to management, and certainly as we looked at cybersecurity, there were no material findings. So, yeah, I think all in all, it was a successful audit. So, the final slide really just, I suppose, signals some of the areas that the audit office will be focused on going forward. So, in FY23, there, there's the usual report on local government, which is the financial audit, which we do each and every year. And then there's some other areas of focus, being cybersecurity, road asset management and coastal management reforms. So, yeah, maybe I'll pause there to see if there are any questions in the committee.
Does anyone have questions? All good to continue, thank you, Craig.
I think that was essentially the end of our presentation, so, yeah.
Councillor Haggerty?
Yeah, the way he ended that sentence, it sounded like there was more to come, so sorry about that. I've got a question in relation to the income statement, so page five of the financial report, financial statements. Just in relation to grants and contributions provided for capital purposes versus grants and contributions provided for operating purposes, do, I guess, how does that work? When a grant comes in, who determines which bit goes to capital, which bit goes to capex, opex, and do you guys audit that?
Yeah, so an assessment's made by management just in relation to the underlying nature and the purpose of the grant that's been received. And certainly as part of our work, we would look at the split between capex and opex just to make sure that it's been appropriately categorised in the P and L. Yep.
Councillor, I can add, if you take the West Invest, it's a perfect example, each of the West Invest grants that were provided to council were for very specific projects and the, from an auditing point of view, they ensure that the funding for each of those specific projects is used for those specific projects.
But my question is, within those specific projects, obviously there's a capex component and opex component. Does council just have a sort of back-of-the-envelope formula or it depends on each project? How is that determined?
That's, I'll, the Director of Operations, who's in charge of those...
Yeah, the allocation, particularly in West Invest, they're with the funding deed allocated 20% of the West Invest funding for what they call administration, but within that administration it's broken down into operational expenses, that is, the people to work on the project. And as we work on capital works projects across council, we fund our project management services as part of the original scope of work, so we understand the costs of the project delivery and we apportion, sometimes it's not a cookie cutter in relation to a percentage, but it's clearly defined and then available to be audited during project completion.
Okay, so that, it's sort of 2080 roughly, yeah, and that's for West Invest? How does that compare with previous projects, say, over the last four or five years?
Yeah, it's an interesting question. Only today, we launched our delivery management framework, which provides council a clear transparency in relation to project costs in the middle of projects. Retrospectively, councillor, I haven't got a great vision of what we did previously, but certainly in the last year, we are starting to have a very, very high and enhanced level of project spend as it relates to that very question. So, we're very, very comfortable, we've got the processes in place now with the delivery management framework to understand those costs as they present.
I don't know if that answers my question. So, are we allocating more to opex or less with this new framework or...?
Well, again, we, I would less, obviously less to opex, but...
I mean, compared to how we've previously done things?
Compared to, because I'm not sure it was measured well.
Right.
That's my point. What I'm saying to council is that...
You've got confidence in the way it's been measured.
Absolute confidence in the delivery management framework, which is put in place, only launched today.
Okay.
Yep.
Just, I guess, take this on notice, if we could get a breakdown of the percentage spend between capex and opex over the last sort of three or four years with the grants, I'd just be keen to...
In relation to grants?
Yep. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, thank you very much, deputy mayor. Look, I think that's an outstanding result and I think that council should be congratulated. I also thank Larissa and Craig for their audit presentation, but I think that we've certainly been in difficult times and I think immediately following the last election, we went into the election with one economic outcome or one economic vision, and after the election, the whole world had been turned upside down for us. And I know that this council has put in an enormous amount of work to go back, forensically examine the budget, look at the areas where we had to move money from one section of council to another so that we could deliver the services. And at that time, I believe that council also made the promise to return to black in three years. And I can't remember the deficit at that time, I think it was either 11...
It was 11.9 last year. I think it was closer to 14, was it, or 12 or 14?
Thank you, councillor Rhodes. If I could just echo that thanks to staff as well for all the hard work and walking us through these details as well, so thank you. Can I move that these annual financial reports be accepted, accepted by councillor Rhodes, seconded councillor Amun, all those in favour, against, declare it carried? I'll now vacate the chair and ask the mayor to take his position chairing the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. How did she go?
Very good.
Wonderful. Be careful, be careful what you wish for. You should have made it, should have made it work for a bit, but excellent. All right, great. Motion of urgency, wonderful, and thank you, everyone, and my apologies for that. I had to finalise a, something very urgent. So, the next is the motion of urgency from the CEO. I'll hand it over to you, Mr CEO.
Thank you. Councillors, before you, you should have the papers for the Project Control Advisory Committee Charter. Just, you'll note from the executive summary that your meeting at 24 August, you considered the consequences of the delays in investment in section 711 developer contributions in our city. It was noted that City of Liverpool experiencing substantial growth and development leading to an influx of additional 711 developer contributions designated for infrastructure projects to accommodate expansion, and council resolved to create a project control advisory committee to provide oversight and guidance on the design, planning, execution of all council infrastructure projects funded. What you will see in the report is the proposed advisory committee draft for it, and basically we're asking you to approve that so that the matter can proceed. I can hand over to the Director of Operations if he wants to add anything further to that, otherwise available for questions. Jason, did you want to add anything? No, thank you.
Happy to move the motion.
Just a point of order.
Yes, councillor.
Just in relation to the urgency, says here in the meeting, says here in the email that the reason for urgency is that the first meeting of the committee is to be held in November. How can you book a meeting for a committee that hasn't been established? It's circular logic, if you catch my drift. We haven't established the committee.
So, on the issue of urgency, it got down to the fact that the motion, when moved, contradicted itself, and one of the points you raised is one of those.
Yep.
So, ultimately, it's sort of, it's convoluted, it's now trying to unconvolute it. And as opposed to wait till the next month, wait till the next month, until fix it up, its urgency is just to fix it up now so it can help resolve that issue.
Councillor, I can also add to that. For us, the reality was that the committee was formed at the meeting of the 24th of August, but there were conflicting aspects in relation to that. This is trying to fix that aspect of it so that that first meeting... This is trying to fix that aspect of it, so that that first meeting can be held.
I still think it's circular logic.
Sorry.
I'm, I'm with you, look, I'm, I'm happy to accept it, from that point of view, I guess, yes. So if we go and discuss it and debate it, happy to go through that. Yes councillor Caliander?
I guess just following that train of thought, it just seems, yeah, putting the cart before the horse almost. So, you know, my understanding when this item was brought before us previously was that, you know, the charter would come back so that there would be an opportunity to, to go through and, and understand the nature of the committee and the scope of the committee as a regular item of business before then, you know, meetings would be booked and all of that sort of thing. So it seems like there's a massive rush on this when there was, you know, to my recollection, there was quite a lot of discussion and debate around the, you know, the, the scope and the nature of the committee in the first instance.
Yes, the Director for Finance.
Councillor, you're correct, I mean, the resolution did require a advisory committee charter to come back to the council. Clearly, clearly, the discussion in August focused on the, the urgency of reducing the level of 711 funds and getting that into active projects on the ground. So we needed to obviously act on this, the sooner we could do that, the sooner those funds could be better utilised and that's why the port stresses, stresses that. The intention today was that the council does debate and ultimately accept either the current charter or one modified by yourselves, such that the next, in November, council will be in a position to then run the, run the committee.
I guess that's the kind of, you know, that's the aspect of this that I'm not quite sort of understanding in terms of the, the timeframe, because we've had, what, two days to consider the charter? Ordinarily, if it was a, you know, ordinary item of, of business, it would have been about a week, which I think is the courteous thing to do, given there was such discussion and debate when this item was first raised.
Yeah, well, councillor, I, I get that, having enough, have enough time to consider, to consider, things are very important. Is this going on public exhibition? Can I ask the, the charter? No? Not exhibition? Yep. I think there, there's even a question whether a committee's even needed to do this, because ultimately, council has established contributions plans, we've collected the money, the money has sat there, the money has not been used for its purpose. I'm sure we have numerous examples, whether it's in Austro, where kids don't have parks, whether it's in Edmonds, once again, Edmonds Park, that doesn't have a park, this all gets down to this. So realistically, from our core business as a council, non-operational, we need to be dealing with this as quickly as possible. You know, we should have been putting up in the budget, hey, we've got this money, what's it for? Why aren't we spending it? Move to spend it on X, Y, Z. And it's, so once again, is a charter needed? No, not necessarily. We can just have meetings, start putting these motions to the floor of council and start delivering the infrastructure that people have paid for. So I guess, I, I know, I hear your point and I'm, I'm, I know there's, I'm happy to defer things because, like in booklets, because we get so much information to read in five or six day period. At the same time, I think with something like this, I, I'm supporting it, I'm moving it, has it moved already? It's moved already? Seconded, seconded, there's a seconded councillor Amun. And for the purpose that, we just need to get going, we need to get going on. So if we can, we can defer it, but I don't think it's going to change any outcome, let's hurry up and give these people the infrastructure that they need and let, let us focus on that, where we need to be strategically and expending that money as opposed to getting caught in any greedy stuff. Councillor Green?
So just one last thing. And, and I absolutely understand that and I have no qualms about, you know, trying to get infrastructure out the door to people as, as they need it. You know, it's something that we've been talking about for six, seven years on council so far. My concern is around getting into a habit of putting things on the agenda, like, you know, giving us 24 hours to process something and I, I don't think that is good practice. I don't think that is something that we should be doing in terms of important things like this. There is a reason why the charter was recommended as a way forward on this. So, you know, I, I would like perhaps yours and the CEO's undertaking that this kind of last minute, 24 hour notice thing for significant documents, that we should have the, the time and the mental capacity to go through and do right by the residents of this city, that they be given appropriate notice for us to consider.
Yes, look councillor, completely agree with you, this is not a usual occurrence for us. In fact, it's quite rare for us to bring a matter of urgency of this nature for the reasons we've stated, but your message is received loud and clear. But as I said, it's not something that we do on a regular basis, it's in fact far rarer than, than regular.
Yeah. So can you put your microphone on please?
You know, far be it for me to get into an argument, but there have been a number of circumstances over the last few months where I, I have made this point around giving people appropriate, you know, time and, and opportunity to consider important documentation so that we can do our jobs properly. I think that's, you know, fundamental to us.
Fully noted and justified.
Is there any other commentary?
Could I ask a question?
Yes councillor Green, sorry.
In point four function, where it says council goals, I'm wondering, is it possible to actually tighten that up? I mean, should this not be linked to council strategic plans rather than goals? You know, I'm just conscious that.
Do you want to change, do you want to change, rather than council, so we say that council strategic plan?
Yes, please.
So can we, on point four?
Yes.
The first, can we remove the word goals and put strategic plan after the word council? If the mover and seconder are happy with that? Yep? Yep? Yep. My only other question is just regarding, is only regarding to the, the quorum, because the quorum is six and it has to be half. I just, considering, I know there are two members of parliament here, one who got a promotion, congratulations councillor Hagerty. All right. What do they, what do they say? If you have, if you want a job done, give it to a busy person, because they know how to get it done? Right? So yeah. So I just note that whether, if councillors want to consider making the committee, obviously all councils can attend, but whether we make the members being seven councillors, being mindful that there are three councillors who haven't been, are busy. Or eight councillors? Seven? Seven?
Four will be four.
Odd. Yeah. Because.
Is this quorum?
Yeah, the membership is linked to quorum and ultimately, I know you are to have a significant extra workload, so I just don't want us to get all together and not have quorum at a meeting. I mean, just to be fair to everyone else.
Five? Five? Five?
Are you talking quorum or membership?
Oh.
We've got to go membership first and whatever that works out for.
So what were you saying, seven?
If you say.
Oh, seven, sorry, eight.
Seven and then it's 50 plus one. Yeah. Seven and then 50 plus one is the quorum.
Four. I should know that count better, shouldn't I? No, I think if we did, if we did eight members, eight members and keep, and have quorum at five. Yep? Councillor?
I thought, according to this, all councillors are members.
Yeah, I'm saying.
That then means it's 11. Half of 11 plus one.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is councillor Hall is that if we amend the number to eight councillors, as opposed to all councillors, that makes quorum five. You know, you've been, I'm sure we've all been to meetings. It's got to be 50% plus, plus one.
Through the, Mr Mayor, this motion, I think the last time that we addressed it, we had it set at a certain number and all councillors said, oh, I'd like to be on that. That's why we ended up in this situation. So this, this motion has been before council before, it's not something that you've just suddenly had thrown upon you, which might have been what other people were thinking about. It was addressed at a previous meeting, that's when you all wanted to be, that's.
That's the mayor. Yeah.
Where you all decided that.
Let's not go back and, let's think about, ultimately, if you want to keep it as is, but I just hope everyone can be there so we can get quorum. Right? So whatever you guys want to do, I'm happy to make it eight, but if you want to keep it as is, we keep it as is.
I'm happy to make it eight.
I look to.
Five.
Huh?
I'm happy to make it eight, but if 11 turn up, 11 have voting rights.
Of course.
Yep, okay, fine.
Agreed.
Let's go.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll change it to eight members of the committee. Yep? The eight? So, so if everyone's happy that, and can I recommend the eight? The, the eight members?
I'd like to be on it, thank you.
Yeah, myself. The eight members, if we got under eight. No, we just, no, we have, the quorum is linked to the membership. Yeah. It is, but then we will get to, we have to get six councils out of, to have the quorum. I'm happy to keep it as is, as long as we get quorum. Oh, look, let's try, let's keep it, all councillors and let's keep it as is and let's see how we go. If we need to amend it, we'll amend it later on. Everyone happy with that?
We can pilot it.
Pilot?
We can pilot it.
Pilot.
Well, we don't need to pilot, just consult councillors on the proposed dates, all councillors. Yeah, good idea.
Cool, okay. No further discussion, put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried.
Mr Mayor, I also have an urgency motion.
Yes councillor, deputy mayor, what is your urgency motion?
So it relates to the mode, the urgency motion that I put forward last month, that was unanimously supported and I hope this one will be too. And it relates to the Battle of Bishiba memorial that is coming up on this Sunday and so that's what makes it urgent.
Yep, yeah, and that's happening this Sunday? Yep?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm happy to accept that as, as an urgent motion.
Thank you very much. So the motion is very simple and I'll explain it after. So it's that council allocate $2,500 from the general funds to cover the costs associated with the Battle of Bishiba memorial service being held this coming Sunday.
Happy to move that, second that.
Great.
I'm happy to speak for the motion. So last time we were here, we agreed to give in kind support to, to this event that has been run in our community for a very long time. That included the provision of things like chairs and marquees and things like that, but council doesn't actually have that to provide, so we need to support. Council's civic events team have been working with the organisers and so to, we need to offer a small amount of financial support to facilitate the event, particularly given that Sunday is going to be quite a hot day. And this will cover chairs, shade and water and things like that as well. So I ask for your support so that we can go ahead for this important memorial.
So can I ask a question?
Sorry, I need to see the red light. Councillor Caliander, you had your light on for a moment?
Yes. My, my question was just about how the $2,500 recommended in the urgency motion kind of compares to previous amounts of support the council's provided, so how, you know, what has been the amount that we have provided in previous years for the same event?
I'll ask the Director to respond.
Thank you, through the CEO, that's covering the, the hard, some of the hard costs that we need for equipment and furnishings and like, so it's, we've got the quotes and that's the cost that is required, so it'll cover everything that's needed.
And I guess the other thing is, my recollection is that it, there's, there's been sort of a number of years where this particular event has come up as an urgency motion or as kind of like a late kind of support, whether it's in terms of providing kind or whether it's in terms of providing monetary support. That obviously then sets a precedent in terms of, you know, how other organisations may choose to approach council for support for their events. And so, you know, I'm also mindful that we have to apply a fair process and ensure that we encourage people to, to use the processes that exist and not just circumvent them by bringing things to council floor. Not that I have, like I said, not that I have any issues with the event itself or the proposed urgency motion, but we, there, there are many organisations that do incredible things across the entirety of our community, that is why there are processes, so how can we kind of encourage that?
Look, look, thank you councillor, I, I can assure you the process is fair, it is open and we do receive many requests, many of them we can assist, some we can't. And in some cases, we refer them to the local members, state members and federal members with your discretionary funding to assist.
Microphone.
Absolutely, we tell people to knock on your door, sometimes they may not tell you that we told them to knock on your, but I can assure you, we've been telling people to knock on your door as, as the local member. But look, what you say is absolutely valid and, you know, the Director and her team are very thorough with that and they're all come, and then as you know, many of them come to you for approval on a council level. So it's very open, it's very transparent.
Great.
I'd like to speak for the motion, Mr Mayor.
Yes councillor.
Just to, for some clarity about the event, I don't think this event has ever, ever asked for help before. It is an event which is very significant to Liverpool. I know that my grandfather was in the Light Horse and I appreciate this event being run and the fact that it has done so purely through the goodwill of one constituent is an amazing thing. I really appreciate the council's support for such a small amount of money, which is definitely just covering the cost of the event. And I urge all councillors, for the sake of the Battle of Bishiba commemoration, that that they approve this, approve this motion.
Wonderful, great. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. I just got lost, some paperwork, one second, sorry, thank you.
I think we're having.
Great, thank you. Councillors, we'll now move into, to mayor minutes. And I'd like to, one of the reasons why I was a bit, a little bit late, I'd like to read the first one, which is titled, which is not on the list here, and it's titled Yalamandi, The Storyteller. Storytelling is powerful. Through story, we learn, we share, we feel, we do many things. We tell stories in many ways, through word, through art, around a fire and around a kitchen table. Our First Nations brothers and sisters have been telling stories for tens of thousands of years. Through each story, wisdom is passed on from today's elders to tomorrow's elders. The line continues unbroken, from the first generation to today's generation, to the end of time. We must never underestimate the power and importance of telling story. Today, we acknowledge the importance that Liverpool's community places on story. Representing every nation and culture in the world, our stories are those of humanity combined. On the 2nd of December, we will open our new library named Yalamandi, The Storyteller. This multi-million dollar investment in this building is a place where our stories will be told, because we value stories, we value knowledge, we value learning. In Yalamandi, there's much symbolism in its form and architecture. Its white symbolises peace, purity and innocence. The oval symbolises rebirth, fertility and immortality. The circle represents equality. The books and stories represent knowledge and light. All these attributes are so needed in our world, not just today, but always. We constantly are world engulfed in darkness. In this darkness, we lose innocent human life, in particular the most innocent, our children. When humans fail, innocent children die. If we ever had one metric that measured the success of humanity, it would be how many innocent children have died because of the conflicts caused by man. Our goal as humans is to make this zero. Children are innocent and we have an obligation to protect them at all cost. There is no distinction between any of them and all are equal. Unfortunately, we keep on failing children. Today, as we speak, children are being bombed, killed, orphaned, because humans failed. Innocent children, rather than surrounding an ice cream truck, choosing what ice cream they want to buy, they now lie in that ice. they now lie in that ice cream truck, dead, in a body bag, because the morgues are full of dead innocent children. Their stories need to be told. We have to be reminded of what we have lost. We have to tell their stories to future generations so they can learn from our mistakes. Today, I move that Yalomandi tell their story forever. Today, I move that Yalomandi be dedicated to the innocent children of the world who are killed in conflict. We will count them, but they will not be mere numbers. We will tell their stories, we will share their pictures, and we will always remember that we failed them. We failed them because it's every human's responsibility to speak up and protect them. In its shape, its form, its purpose, Yalomandi will tell the story of those innocent angels forever. Located at the top of our town, she stands as a beacon of light. Let that light drive out darkness, so humanity will never need something like this ever again. And our motion is I move the above action items contained with that minute, and all councillors work with the CEO to help achieve the object, objectives. Seconded, Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. And declare unanimous. Thank you councillors. The next mayoral minute, going back in order now, is back in black. In 2021-22, council posted a deficit net operating result of $11.9 million. The incoming council set a budget target of $8.4 million deficit net operating result for 2223, with an aim to achieve a surplus in three years. As mayor, I've been determined to ensure our budget is in order. That's why I'm proud to share that council has recorded a surplus operating result for 2022-23, which is well ahead of its target. This is the first time as a coun- council achieved a, a surplus operating result since 2018-19. In 2324, council has budgeted for $3.7 million deficit and will work towards achieving another surplus position. Council has achieved this while increasing the quality of critical services. Given the current economic climate, this has not been an easy task. So I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of the councils and the council staff that made this possible. While this achievement is a fantastic, fantastic step in the right direction, there's still much more work to do. And I'd like to note that council has, notes, I'd like to move that council notes that Liverpool council has achieved a surplus operating result for the first time since 2018-19. Thank the councils and the council staff for their continued effort to ensure our budget remains in a surplus position. Move councillor Moon, any discussion?
Um, could I, um, maybe add a third point there?
Yes, councillor Green.
So that we can continue to, um, provide, uh, critical and quality services to our residents, and noting that, um, there are approximately 150 vacancies across the organisation. Could I ask that it be a priority that frontline services are filled, those vacant positions are filled? In particular, I'm not talking just about, um, outdoor staff, but also the staff that are, that respond and are responsible to respond to customer, um, service, uh, queries, um, traffic, like, those teams, that the teams that are short-staffed at the moment, where there are vacant positions, and they are critical frontline services that are, you know, field, like, backlogs, we've heard that compliance have 700 uh, i- issues that are, are backlogged, that, I think it's important, it's wonderful to have a surplus, and congratulations to all. Um, I do think that part of, what we need to do is make sure that the priority is to fill those positions.
Yeah, yeah, councillor, I'm, I'm just noting, and that, that's a, that's an operational item, and I guess kind of takes a little bit away what we're talking about, but I think I'll just refer to the CEO, so comment on that.
The councillor, I can assure you that the absolute priority is continuing the work. We've already started a huge amount of work in trying to fill all positions, uh, that are vacant, uh, that is one of our priorities. Uh, we're also undertaking quite an extensive amount of work to looking at employing seniors, people with disability, call community, Aboriginal communities, because there is a, and most importantly, our youth from a trainee. So simply seniors, youth, working together, very experienced, young, energetic, strong, if I can use that term, people with disability, looking at those areas. So we are actually on track with that. If you really wanted part three to be in it, I, I would prefer, if you're agreeable councillor, to add the words that we continue to work on filling out, because we are doing quite a bit of work. The way it reads, it sounds like we're doing nothing, and that's so unfair on the staff.
That's fine, I'm happy to add that, and then, um, my, next month, I, I can ask for my question of notice for a report.
Yeah.
It's fine.
It's like, can I just ask, while we are on the topic, um, how are we tracking, particularly in terms of um, the planning end of things, because it's all well and good us congratulating ourselves on this, and yet being on the front page of the newspaper for our DA waiting times, um, is not, is, is pretty cold comfort to residents.
Yeah, great, that's a great question, I'll pass over to the CEO.
Look, it's a great question, and I know that a minute, uh, mayoral minute will be indicated. That article in the paper was very unfair. We gave them many statistics, they took one very small part of the statistic. I can put this to you simply, there were DAs prior to my arrival, prior to the appointment of the new planning director in Leena Kakeesh, that had been sitting in there for years. Well, we're approving those, and we're getting them through the express, they're being approved. So the great news is we've gone from 1,100 down to about 450 DAs in nine months. That's an incredible feat, that staff should really be congratulated. Where staff were upset is that by being attacked, that the period has gone up in days. Well, that's an unfair reflection on the staff, and it's an unfair way to look at it. Because if DAs have been sitting in the system for years, and we're approving them, the mean average goes up. You are going to go through a period of time where the average goes up. But I'm happy for that to go up, that means we're approving the DAs, that's what's important. We're not, not approving them, we're not asking them to withdraw them, we're not asking them to discontinue and re-lodge again. We're approving the DAs, and that's the reality, and I'm more than happy to take it offline. But to be criticised for it is a really unfair slap, and the very hardworking staff, and it really upset me that the newspaper article took one little line of an extensive amount of information we sent them, and simply chose to say what they want to say.
Thank you, CEO, I want to just know that we can, we'll get to that in the next, in a, in a future, future mayoral minute.
Sorry, can I just clarify, the CEO kept using the word approval, I think you meant determined.
Determined.
I think it's careful we, yeah.
They're determined.
Yeah, we'll get, yeah, just leave that, we'll bring that up in a second when we get to that, I want to keep, let's keep, keep on the budget. Um. I'm happy to accept that point three, no worries, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. Next one is vibrancy reforms. Um. To build Liverpool as a capital of the South West City, we need to ensure that the quality of life in Liverpool is of a high standard, and as a council, it is important that we support our local entertainment zones, our live music scene and our local economy, especially at a time where New South Wales hospitality industry is struggling. It is for these reasons that I welcome the Mins government's proposed vibrancy reforms, which remove red tape across sector. The reforms are logical and sensible, for example, there are currently seven agencies that accept noise complaints, including councils. The proposed reforms will streamline the process and make liquor and gaming in New South Wales the sole manager of noise complaints against licensed venues. It is worth noting that the proposal, proposal for the Minister for, the Special Minister of State, Minister for Roads, Arts, Music, the Nighttime Economy, Jobs and Tourism, and the Honourable John Graham to expand the success of the Enmore Road special attainment precinct to other areas via a new, uh, via a new framework for councils. This content has been delivered with the intent of making it easier to live vibrant, safe, going out, destination support by adequate and reliable transport and good lighting. Further to this, I was excited to learn of rule changes to outdoor dining, which will allow venues to make the most of their outdoor space with a quicker, light touch application process. I'd like to propose that council invites the Honourable John Graham and the 24 Hour Economy Commissioner to Liverpool for a site visit, discuss how Liverpool can maximise the potential of our CBD's night time economy in light of the vibrancy reforms. And I'd like to move that council welcomes the Mins government vibrancy reforms, to invite the Honourable John Graham, Special Minister of State, Roads, Arts, Music, Nighttime Economy, Jobs, Tourism and the 24 Economy Commissioner to Liverpool for a site visit, noting council's vibrancy reforms. And three, the site economy unit prepare a report after the visit for the potential for a night time economy for Liverpool CBD, take into account our vibrant multiculturalism and emergence as a, as a university city.
Happy to second that motion.
I make a suggestion as to how perhaps the motion can be enhanced, I'll use that word. Um, perhaps extend the invitation to all, uh, local state representatives within the LGA. Because, uh, when I compare the engagement that, um, our city has with, um, with, you know, in comparing the engagement our city has with our state representatives compared to other cities, um, I don't think we're maximising the utility of that as yet, so I think there, there could be a lot more that, that can be done by perhaps extending that invitation to local state reps.
Um.
Is there a conflict of interest there?
No, I'm just, no, I'm just not a conflict of interest. I'm just, I think we have five state members of parliament who cover the area. Um, so I'm just like, what, what, what do you mean that, because I know we've got a policy that states of when, who, what should be invited to what, so can you, just so we can, just so we can make sure we get the desired outcome.
So in point two, where you, um, have obviously indicated, um, that part, that this motion will invite the minister, extend that invitation to the local state representatives who are obviously advocating in the best interests of the LGA on a daily basis.
Yeah, so I was saying, but when we get the minister, we see if all the other MPs can turn up, all five of them? Yeah.
I have a question, Chair. Um, in point three.
Yep.
With the city economy unit preparing a short report after the visit on the potential for the night time economy, um, can we please include in that, uh, that the, um, what we're talking about is, is also smoke free? We're talking about the mall, and we're talking about night time attracting people into the CBD, that it's about also, uh, providing smoke free?
Uh, this doesn't cover talk about smoking whatsoever, and it's, and it's, uh.
I only mention it because it's the one thing that people constantly, when you talk about the quarry mall, we'll bring up time and time and time again, is that the people are not going, don't go during the day and, and evening, whatever, because the smoking in the mall. So if we're, we are really, we're, we, and I'm absolutely behind, uh, night time economy and developing that, and I think it's exciting. I saw the, um, I think it's also Canterbury Bankstown, Bankstown Council has already taken this on board. If we're really wanting a vibrant and dynamic night time economy, then it, it needs to incorporate that the area is smoke free, that way it brings in families, children, and gives our young people also, um, entertainment as well, opportunity.
I, I think councillor Green, that's a whole, that whole smoking discussion in the mall is a whole nother thing, so I think we'd.
Let's not forget it.
Ultimately, what we're saying is, you know, it, it's good, we're talking about this. You know, I think we had, we had sixty, how many people did we have in the mall this weekend? Or can I refer to the CEO?
Yeah, it was sixty thousand. We had, Mister Mayor, it was 60,000.
So.
Yep, and it was great, I was there on Sunday night, and I asked three people who were smoking, where children were in the playground, to please remove.
Oh.
Mister Mayor, just while we're on that, the, the, the event that occurred last weekend, great feedback. I'd like to congratulate once again the events team and the director for community. Uh, Tina, thank you very much. These events are really actually putting Liverpool on the map. I had people come out from Merrickville for this event, so it was really, really good. Thank you.
So I think we have some vibrancy, hopefully we can bring the minister with the members of parliament, um, you know, um, to what they call it, uh, to come and enjoy this, so. And we can discuss the other stuff later on. That being said, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. There we go. Here we go, let's talk planning. Dear colleagues. I am presenting this mayoral minute in response to the recent reports of excessive time required for the assessment of development applications within our city. The information reported upon was one statistic in isolation, and not surprisingly, taken out of context with regards to the overall successful report, reforms and improvements that our council is delivering, led by our CEO, the Honourable John O'Draka, and our newly appointed director of planning, Leena Kakeesh and her team. When the new council was elected and I took over as mayor, the council's planning assessment system was quite frankly, broken. In recognition of the issues, particularly the long delays in assessing development applications, the backlog of applications and the difficulty retaining planning staff, our council took proactive steps by restructuring the planning department under the guidelines of a new CEO and new director. This reorganisation has led to a substantial reduction in the number of development applications, decreasing the backlog inherited from 1,100 to approximately 450 outstanding applications. It's worth noting that, on average, 60 new applications are lodged each week. To address the challenges in our assessment system, our initial focus was on the older and more complex outstanding applications. This approach was necessary to clear the backlog and allocate resources to fast-tracking complying applications. However, this has inadvertently resulted in a distortion of the average time taken to assess applications and increase in refusals. We understand the concerns this may raise among applicants and the community at large. I am pleased to inform council that last week, we organised a highly successful development investment forum. The event saw the active participation of over 100 local stakeholders, including developers and community representatives. The forum provided an invaluable platform for these stakeholders to engage with council and openly discuss the challenges we all face. I can, I'd like to congratulate the city economy team under the city futures director for the successful event. In conclusion, while we have made substantial progress in addressing the issues related to the assessment of development applications, we acknowledge that there is more work to be done. We must find a balance between expeding, uh, uh, expediting assessments and ensuring that our decisions align with the best interests of our community. I believe that with the support and collaboration of all stakeholders, including our council members, we can continue to improve our processes and make Liverpool an even better place for residents, businesses and developers alike. And I'd like to move that council notes the positive progress of reforms and development assessment process at Liverpool City Council. Two, notes the success of the recent developer investment forum held by the city economy team. Three, thanks council staff for the exceptional work in regards to DA, uh, determinations. Any discussion?
Happy to second it.
So, um, just as per my previous request, can I ask that the information, um, that you have provided to the media be circulated to all councillors, so we can understand the context?
That should be really exceptional, not exception.
Oh, exceptional work.
Yeah, point three, change exception to exceptional. Thanks.
Great, so we can get that, councillor Grunoffel. I'll put, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. Point number four regarding, uh, Ross Willing, I'd like to move that we deal with that in closed session at the end of the meeting. So I'll skip that one for the moment. Number five, Bill Cruise Foundation. Um, the Bill's Crew Foundation has provided food, healthcare and social welfare, education, love and compassion to those that are in need for almost, for over 30 years. In our community, they do fantastic work, nobly at the Liverpool United Church. Last Thursday, I popped down to the United Church to see the team in action as they hosted their Anti Poverty Week Community Hub barbecue. It was a fantastic initiative, and I commend everyone involved in this event. Whilst visiting, I couldn't help but notice how heavy their portable barbecue was. It was for this reason I'd like to move that council donates $1,000 to support the Bill Cruise Foundation in purchasing a new barbecue and relevant appliances for the charitable efforts. I urge council to support this motion. Oh, hello, hello. 2,000, isn't it? Okay, hold on, my apologies, I should have said 2,000.
1,000 should be changed to 2,000.
So I'd like to move that council recognise and thanks the Bill Cruise Foundation for their commitment to social welfare. Two, donates 2,000 to assist, from, from General Reserve to assist with the purchasing of a new barbecue and other relevant appliances for the charitable efforts. And if I could just say on that, I'll move, seconded by councillor Green, just want to say, when I was there at the barbecue and asked him, is anything we can do to help you, he goes, he goes, please get me another barbecue. He goes, he has to take this barbecue and, uh, drag it up on a ramp, uh, into the truck, and it is an extremely heavy barbecue, I actually tried lifting it, so this would be a good way, and hopefully the United Church can provide more services there, so. That's it. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. We'll now move on into the agenda, Plan 01, page endorsement to the participation in non LED street lighting.
I have a motion I'd like to put, Mister Mayor.
Uh, page 62, tab 1, page 63, councillor Rhodes, what is your motion?
Yes, Mister Mayor, I ask that this motion, uh, this council defer this item until councillors can be fully informed about this matter. Council was trying to get the information to me, unfortunately, that hasn't come through.
No worries, do you have a second, there?
I will foreshadow a motion.
Yes, what is your foreshadowed motion, councillor?
As per the book.
As per the book, do you have a second, there? Councillor Hall?
I have questions.
You have to say to the speaker, you, you've already spoken for a question?
Uh, yes, I would just like a little bit of clarity on which parts of the LGA this scheme is supposed to cover, and, um, what the interaction is with safety.
We'll take it on notice, it's going to be deferred, we can deal with it.
Through the CEO, I'll refer to Mr. Wiyafi to provide a response.
Through the CEO, the program involves replacement of all older non LED streetlights. So it's going to cover particularly the much older servants in our LGA, the Prestons, the Cassulas of the LGA. Safety wise, it's a straightforward replacement. Whatever lighting we've got there is just going to be replaced with LED lights. You would have read in the report that all the nine West Rock councils have almost completed their program. We left with Liverpool. The program needs to be completed by June. Councillor, I hear the discussion about whether it should be deferred. If we defer the item now, Endeavour Energy would walk away and the program will not be completed.
So that means that we lose potentially eight hundred or thousand dollars.
That's what's cost us.
Through the CEO, it's not that we're going to lose the eight hundred thousand. If the report has not clarified it, Endeavour Energy is spending fifty million dollars of their own money. This is upfront funding that Endeavour Energy has decided to do. The reason is because they are also going to gain carbon credits. But they are doing it for the councils involved. And Endeavour Energy, it services this area, it services the South Coast, it services Irawa. And that's the work that they are doing. They are not going to gain any money from it. It's just going to help the councils reduce our energy bills.
Can I have further clarification then, please?
Clarification on?
Yep, clarify, this, this program, is it a replacement of the West Rock Light Years Ahead?
Through the CEO, it's not a replacement, it's a continuation of it. The Light Years Ahead, Mr. Mayor, if you remember, you turned on a couple of lights about seven odd years ago. This is just a continuation of it. That program was partly funded by council and the Commonwealth Government at the time. This time Endeavour Energy is funding that program, but they expect councils to make a contribution for their residual value. So if you've looked in the report, the residual value, it's about the eight hundred and fifteen odd thousand. But once that program, once the replacements are done, there'll be credit, energy credits that we will be able to sell and we would gain a hundred and forty four thousand.
I understand completely the concept of what the proposal is about. What I'm having difficulty in understanding is council no longer engaged in the Light Years Ahead West Rock program. This is a replacement or a continuation of it. Does that mean that the Light Years Ahead West Rock program has ceased?
Through the CEO, the Light Years Ahead program was a discreet program for the replacement of LED lights at the time. We still cooperate and we still work closely with West Rock and all the councils go through one main consultant to make sure that we pull our resources together, we share information, we share ideas about the LED replacement program. So the name has changed slightly, but the Light Years Ahead was just a discreet program that's been completed. But we're still working with the West Rock group.
Through the CEO, councillor, this is a funding report. The, it's not seeking to change any strategy or to regress from any strategy. It is simply about obtaining some funding allocation to facilitate the delivery of LED light replacements, which will benefit council around about fourteen million dollars over the next twenty years.
And can we have the names of the other councils that have already completed?
Can I move that the motion be put?
No, I have a question.
So all due respect, councillor, I think you, you just told us before about people wanting information and discussion. The council's asking information. Huh? No, I think ideally, hopefully councillor Rhodes from this can get the information required. So we maybe can maybe get back down just to moving this versus deferring it. I'm hoping it's going this way.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It is extremely important that councillors are well educated in the decisions that they are making. And I like this opportunity to be able to ask, as it has been pointed out, that it would be detrimental to this council to defer this particular motion. So it is relevant to me acquiring this information to direct my decision in this regard. And I thank councillors for their patience. My question, now that I've said all that, I've forgotten what it was, to be perfectly clear. You see, the Lighthead, Lightheads.
Light Years Ahead?
Ahead program was replacing LED lights.
Yes.
This program is also replacing LED lights.
That's, that's.
Through the, through the CEO, this program is about not replacing LED lights, replacing streetlights that don't have LED lights at the moment.
Isn't that what the Light Years Ahead program is?
Just clarifying.
The way you said it, yeah.
Apologies, I wasn't sure, I'm not sure about the, I'm just clarifying, that's the intent of this.
Well, Mr. Mayor, let me make it crystal clear. For the last year, I have received more than a hundred complaints from residential reguard of the streetlight. So I believe we should treat this issue as a matter of urgency and let's approve this recommendation and move on. Thank you.
I don't believe my motion is relevant then, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the information that has been informed, that I've been informed of, that we, it is an urgency matter that this matter be referred to. So I'm happy to re.
So you're withdrawing it?
Yes, remove my motion.
Done. I'll put the foreshadowed motion, now becomes the motion, all those a favor against declare carried. One for one.
Fourteen million dollars over twenty years. I think it makes me very excited and that's why I.
Let there be light.
Do you, do you know councillor, how much money is saved through the Light Years Ahead program?
Next item is plan zero two, prepare the proposed amendments to the Liverpool DCP Social Impact Assessment. Deputy Mayor, page sixty six.
I have some questions.
Yes. Your questions?
So my question is, I've read through the policies and the amendments. I just have a couple of questions. On page seventy one, under point four, under the note, the last.
Sorry, I don't mean to, from a protocol point of view, I'd like to have a motion before we ask questions. I'm happy to move that we defer this to the next government, to the next governance meeting for a briefing on what outcomes this policy has achieved.
I'm happy to table my questions for that discussion.
Yep.
I'm happy to move, second the motion.
A second councillor Rhodes.
I will foreshadow.
Yep, councillor McNaul, sorry, deputy mayor, sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you, but please continue.
So my questions are around the, can I, I'd like to have an example, some examples of what might be covered by that line that says, in addition to this list, council reserves the right to require SIA for any development for which it considers. It's a very comprehensive list based on a policy. We've just spent a lot of time talking about DA processing and housing crises and et cetera, et cetera. So I would like to understand what we possibly have not covered. And I would also like to understand the reasoning behind when we go to, so I've read our social impact assessment policy and guidelines and I can't find any link to when it comes to comprehensive social impact assessment, changing the residential flat building, for example, from greater than two fifty to greater than one hundred. I can't find any kind of reference for that. So I guess I just have a few questions that I'd like to be answered before we vote on this.
Take it on notice. Take it on notice.
I'm happy with that.
Yep, councillor Hall?
Oh, sorry. Actually, you were first, doesn't matter. Just a quick question on this, I read through this that it was peer reviewed. Who did the peer review?
Director of planning?
Through the CEO, I think I know who it is, but I'll confirm that and come back to you at the briefing. Yep.
Councillor Hagerty?
Sorry. Yeah, I'd like to foreshadow a motion.
Yep.
As per the book and speak against the motion that we're discussing at the moment.
Just one sec, do you have a second for the foreshadowed motion, councillor Caliendo?
Yep.
Councillor Carnib, thank you. Just in, and I'll address a couple of the questions from the deputy mayor in relation to my understanding of that bit about council reserving the right is that in, I know previously we've had issues where things are sort of, like in the grey area, they've slipped outside of this. A certain pub in a certain suburb that has a high amount of disadvantage increased the amount of pokies. And that only required a one pager. And at the time, I think the view of council was that it required, probably required a more comprehensive statement. So it's sort of edge cases like that where as an elected body, we can, we can choose to do a comprehensive statement if we wish. And just in regards to the residential flat buildings, I was of the view that, I was of the belief that we had put that down to a hundred previously. I know when it was put up, I was quite, I pushed against it, but it got through. And then I think we ended up putting it down. And that was based on the fact that I, if you look at councils across Sydney, I don't think anyone has anything above a hundred and twenty. Most of them around seventy, eighty, a hundred, two hundred and fifty is significantly higher than any other council in Sydney. At the time, I'd changed since then, but two hundred and fifty is very, very high.
Yep, councillor Rhodes?
Yes, I'll speak for the original motion to defer this and to take it to a governance meeting. And the reason being, because my concerns when I read this, I don't know whether all, everybody here at council understands that some time ago, I think I went great efforts to have removed the council discretion from policies. And in this regard particularly, I have concerns which I would like to have the opportunity to be discussed in a formal setting so that we can all get to the bottom of it. Particularly when we say that it's at the discretion of council to call for a, an assessment at any time during the policy procedure of determination. I see that as a speed hump in us achieving to be able to get through these development applications in a quick and efficient way. I believe that you, if you want, I believe that all the documentations and assessments necessary for a DA should be dealt with at a pre DA level so that everybody is on the same page and they know exactly what they need moving forward. I think if we had that, we would find that our DAs would go through a lot quicker. So I'd like the opportunity to be able to flesh out that opportunity and discuss it in detail.
Yep. There's a motion, motion to defer, to discuss at the governance meeting and go through it in detail. Right? And there's a foreshadowed motion. All right, I'll, I will, councillor, do you want to say something? Yep, councillor Hall?
Yes, if we're going to defer this, and I had asked before if we could, if I could be told or we can find out who the peer review people were. One of the reasons I asked this, I was personally, I was one of the councillors years ago that said we should look at our SIA policy. And it came to do with, you may remember the Fontainebleau Hotel, that the council sided with the residents to overturn the, the application. And that was primarily due to our SIA policy. And that was due to the people who actually did that. And without those, I think there were two people involved and they were regarded as the best in the state. Hence, I'm concerned as to who did the last peer review. And I'd like to, I would like to see actually that same person who specializes in, that is one of the best people in the state, to have a look at that. Thank you.
Councillor, we'll advise you prior to the governance meeting to give you an opportunity to look at it and be able to comment at the governance meeting.
Yeah, one of them. Okay, great. All right, I'll put the motion that I'd be deferred, all those a favor against declare carried. Okay. Next item is plan zero three, page one twenty four, tab three, completion of VPA, five million dollar court press ins.
I have, I'm happy to move the motion with an amendment.
Yes, what's your amendment?
The amendment would be to include on point two, support the removal of VPA forty four from title, once the required works has been included in the operational plan so that we have a clear sight of when the work might be delivered. I'm not happy with taking it off the title before we've moved it forward into an operational plan.
I think the title, councillor Rhodes, the title is not, is not, it's not ours, it's their title. If they're giving us their money, they've fulfilled their obligation.
But it hasn't been delivered. It may not be delivered for years.
Yeah, but one second, just before you go, so what you want is we've got the money?
Yep.
Deliver, deliver the product, deliver the piece of infrastructure associated with that money.
Well, that would be ideal.
Which is, which is on us to do.
Yes.
Once we've got the money. So having it on title law is not relevant to that thing. It hinges them, doesn't hinder us. It's more, when do we, I think the question is.
Okay, put it in as a point three.
Yep.
That once the VPA forty four has been removed, it is required to be included in the operational plan to.
Yeah, let me on that. Yeah, I guess the question is, do we have any idea of when this will be? Yeah, this VPA will be, this money will be used and we'll build something with it. Yep, and this, yeah, yeah. So if we, can I recommend maybe that the point three says that we, we either get a report back, if you really want to know, because ultimately, if we're going to build something, we need to know what it costs. Do we have enough money? If we don't have money, there's, so there's a whole bunch of issues, you know? We should actually. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it should be got to the cap, we really should be discussing this in our new committee because now we have this money, this is the whole point of it. We got the money, when does it, when we should be putting into the operational plan to find the rest of the money? So if you really want to do it, then use that committee, the point three should be that. Refer the delivery of this matter to, to the CEO to be advised as soon as possible.
Okay.
You know? Do you need, refer to Mr. Wiyafi for, for comment? Yeah, just, let's see, we might have an answer.
Through the CEO, I think you've discussed the issue of removing the obligation. Yes, the obligation needs to be removed. The deputy mayor sent me an email and I responded last night. The developer was required to make a contribution. It was a proportional contribution towards intercession improvement at Benin Road, Yato Road and Uranga Street. The cost involved is about eight point six odd million dollars.
Eight point six million?
That's right, yes. The developer's contribution, it's three hundred and eighty seven odd thousand. So they're only making a small contribution. There are others around the site who are making similar contributions based on their traffic generation potential. My suggestion and the comment there, a report can come to the governance committee to provide information on when the design will be completed, when enough funding will be collected for the intercession upgrade to be carried out.
At the top of your head, when do you see us having eight point six million dollars for this? Next year or two?
This, this will. This will require some capital contribution from council. So my, my advice to the deputy mayor is that in the next two financial years, council should start thinking about putting some contribution in. As background, I can tell you that we are actually arguing with, maybe that's a strong word, with one of the developers who needs to make the most significant contribution. That process would take another six months or so. Design will be completed in the next twelve months and after that we can start thinking about delivery.
I was just, can I ask a follow up question? Thank you so much for getting back to me last night. So I understand there are further contributions to be made by developers in that area. So I understand there are further contributions to be made by developers in that area and it won't all be coming from capital budgets.
That's right.
Thank you.
So councillor Rhodes, I think ultimately, we got 300 grand towards 8.6, so unless you got another spare seven mil?
No, as per the book.
Yeah, moved, as per the book, seconded. Deputy mayor, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. Wonderful, thank you. Next one is Plan 04, minor amendment to LEP 2008, 15 Sandy clause, page 128, tab 4, recommendation on page 129. Move councillor Hall?
Sorry, this was one of the ones I was going to declare a conflict of interest, non-perceval, non-significant. I've had dealings with the club executive on a couple of issues.
No worries, have you filled out the form and?
Oh, yep, fill out the form, stay in the room.
Stay in the room, cool, okay, move councillor Hall?
Just to be on the safe side, I should also declare an interest in the same, I'll do the same.
No worries, fill out, if you can fill out the form please, and I can remind everyone as part of the Local Government Act, our role as councils is to facilitate communication between the community and council, so it's, it's all right.
Happy to second this motion, Mr Mayor, to get it moved.
Yeah, seconded councillor Rhodes, all those in favour, any discussion against?
Sorry, just a bit of discussion.
Oh yeah, sorry.
The club are undergoing significant renovations, actually looks very nice inside. And they have reached out to me and want to work with council, given you've got Stanton and Sirillo next door to help in the activation of that. I think, I can't remember. I either complained to council and southern districts or both of you about parking at Sirillo from time to time, they've got plenty of parking there. Perhaps there are some opportunities to explore with the club, so happy to provide their details, but I'm sure you've got them, yeah, if we can reach out and look at opportunities. Thank you.
Yep, cool, done, sounds good. All right, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declared that, carried. Sorry, is that unanimous because we have to record? Unanimous, yep. Councillor Moon is gone, councillor, council's online, yep, they're all good, unanimous. Please tell me otherwise. Plan 05, planned Arturo Road network for West Sydney, page 141, tab 5, recommendation 142. Happy to move that way, seconded councillor Hall, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. Next item is Plan 06, quarter report, 4.6 variation, page 148, tab 6, move deputy mayor, seconded councillor Hadeed, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare that carried. Next item is COM 01, page 152, tab 7, recommendation on page 152, move councillor Hadeed, seconded deputy mayor, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Next item is Corp 01, page 160, tab 8, recommendation on page 160.
Happy to move.
Councillor, deputy mayor, seconded councillor Hall, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. Next item is Corp 02, investment report, page 164, tab 9, recommendation on page 165, move councillor Green.
Just a quick question.
Seconded councillor Rhodes?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Yep, question please.
Is there any opportunity to transfer money from the poorest investment return, and I've asked this before, to purchase or to invest in land? To buy land, to invest in land?
Basically, rather than have the money sitting in cash, can we use it to buy in bonds, can we buy a land with it?
Yeah, to my knowledge, no, but I'll just refer to the CFO confirm.
Through the CEO, unfortunately, no.
No.
Unless we get ministerial approval.
Yep.
Councillor, this is the part of the discussions we have to have with the relevant ministers about changing certain definitions that we've discussed.
Thank you.
Great, okay, I'll put the motion, if there's no further discussion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Next item is Corp 03, annual financial reports, page 174, tab 10, recommendation 120.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, we did that, I thought while you were at the beginning of the meeting, did we not?
Oh, you said, you said that's already been moved? That's already been moved? Oh, that's as part of the audit?
This was part of the audit, I thought, this is what was moved up as part of the audit?
Can we?
They're just saying, just move it just, just in case. Move deputy mayor, seconded councillor Hall, any discussion?
I've got a question.
Yep.
I know it's not related to the annual report, but I do remember at the last council meeting, I requested a, the council provided a report on the unbudgeted resolutions approved by council. An example would be Plan 01, the Endeavour lighting, 850,000. Operations 01, waste collection, 160,000. We are continually resolving to spend all this money. What, I think that I might not have made myself clear, what I'm looking for is a tally that is a rolling tally that gives us an up-to-date report on these resolutions, resolutions where we have resolved to spend money that was previously not included in the budget. Is that possible? Have I made it clearer than what I possibly did last time?
I think they can take that as a question with notice to provide that information for you. Or is there, yep, I'll refer to the CFO.
Through the CEO, all these changes to the budget will be presented as part of the quarterly budget review that will come in November, so we'll have a list of all changes. Thank you.
The request was for a quarterly review of this so that we can see it as we're moving through the year, the financial year, how much money we're spending that we had not budgeted for. It's a simple request.
Yeah, so councillor, at the, each quarterly budget review will present this, so you will be presented it each quarter. Are you saying you want a separate presentation from the quarterly review?
No, the quarterly review is okay as long as these figures are easily identifiable and not included in the massive figures.
So what we will ensure...
So that we can see it.
What we will ensure is at each quarterly review, these figures are very clearly defined and identifiable.
All right, do we need a motion for that or will we?
No. Crystal clear. Any discussion, further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. Councillors, I now will call for a comfort break. Can I ask that we all be back in here at, at 4pm? You inspired us. Thank you.
He just called me before, actually.
Thank you, everyone. The next item is Operations 01, Proposed Waste Precinct, page 177, tab 11. Recommendation, page 177. Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to move that way with an additional point, Mr. Mayor. Oh, sorry, there is no... There is no, um... Operation 1.
Operation 1.
So, I'd like to move a motion that we support the additional waste collection in the Christmas, New Year period, and that we allocate funding from the waste levy to cover the cost of that service.
Great. I'm happy to second it, councillor Ramon. Any discussion? Put the motion all as a favour. Against, declare carried. Next item is Operations 02, Wunamata South Creek Flood Study, page 181, tab 12. Move councillor Harrell? Second it.
I'm happy to second this. I've got questions.
Councillor Rhodes, yes, questions? Speak.
Uh, the question is, we know that this study was supposed to be done about looking for any illegal fill that has changed the course of the, uh, of the waterways out there that may have resulted in some properties that were not flooded previously to now flooding. That was, uh, an operation that was being done by this council back in 2019/20, and we haven't ever received any results of it. Um, so I presume that that, and according to the, uh, the notes in the agenda, that council's aware of it, and it is still work to be done. The question that I've got, what, what is the actual process then if there are properties that are clearly identified as being made flood-prone because of the illegal dumping? How is council going to handle that?
I'll have to take those questions on notice. They're really good questions. I do have to take them on notice. I also have to look at, um, to answer your question, who is liable? Where does liability lie? Is there other aspects in relation to it? So, um, I'll take those on notice, and I will, uh, then, uh, meet with the, both the Director of Operations and the Director of Finance and Legal, and come back to you.
Thank you. We need to report that back to the constituents because they're very much aware of that, that particular issue.
Wonderful. Councillor Haggerty, did you?
Yeah, sorry, just the references to the New South Wales Government flood study. My understanding was that this was council's flood study.
I'll refer that to the, uh, Director of Operations and to the Director of, uh, Planning if she needs to assist.
Uh, there was an additional study that the New South Wales Government, um, commissioned by Manly Hydraulics. That was the New South Wales Government-funded study.
Is that a study or a peer review?
It was a study in 2020. Um, what happened with that study is that when it was presented to the community, they weren't happy with the, either the outcomes or the veracity of that study. So, we undertook then to do a further study on the back of Manly Hydraulics. That's where we're up to at this stage. And that's what the resolution, uh, suggests. We defer, um, making a final call on South Creek until we've actually reviewed the Manly hydraulic study by undertaking that review.
Okay, but ultimately, this is a council-driven process. They're council's flood maps. Um, that's, that's correct?
Well, it's, uh, to the extent it's council-driven, it's, um, it's not all our land. Uh, and it was, council became intimately involved when they were asked to adopt the New South Wales Government's 2020 study. So, driven, uh, driven's a, uh, driven is, um, only by the fact that our constituents have asked us to rev- review the study based on their assumptions on one in 100. And there was a lot of, um, reasonable and expected noise when some of our constituents who had not experienced a flood were then covered in, in the, um, in the one in 100 mapping. That's what they're concerned about. In relation to the illegal waste scenario, that is part of our review. So, we've undertaken to look at that illegal wa... That's, that's on the scenario that somebody would build up their land with illegal waste or otherwise to make their land flood, uh, flood-proof, but of course would have a causation effect on, uh, adjacency. So, that, that is part of our review, um, of the 2020 study. So, we will undertake that as part of the resolution.
All right. Um, I would like to speak in favour of this motion, um, having had a fair bit to do with the previous, uh, stuff that happened in, in 2020. Um, there really is no point doing a flood study or updating flood maps given the amount of, um, work that's going on out there. I was out there for the M12, uh, announcement, um, about two or three weeks ago. When you drive through there, it's phenomenal, the amount of work that's going on, um, in the area there that's, you know, basically flows into South Creek. You've got the airport, you've got the metro, you've got the M12. My understanding is that the airport will retain all the water on-site, uh, which will obviously have a massive impact on, uh, upstream-downstream impacts of South Creek. So, until some of that work is done, I'd, I'd, any flood map that you do is, is going to be redundant in six to 12 months. So, uh, I thank council for this, uh, for this report.
Thank you, councillor Haggerty. Any other further discussion? I'll put the motion... Oh, councillor Harrell?
Oh, simply, simply supporting that. You know, it's an area that I've had a lot to do with in the past 20 years, and, uh, we, we've, we find there's enormous changes going on in that area, including sadly, illegal dumping. It's one of the major issues in that area, and we really need to see, uh, what, what happens in the future before we, we start. And particularly, the airport needs to be finished before you start looking at approving flood, uh, maps that are obviously going to change.
Wonderful. Great. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion all as a favour. Against, I declare carried. Next item is Operation 03, Managing Drainage Channels, page 208, tab 13, page 208.
I have an amendment.
What is your motion, councillor Harrell?
Uh, one, one as is. Two, I would like to change that instead of option four, option one, but without the footpath, and the rest the same. Happy to...
Can you say that again, please, councillor?
Sorry?
Can you say that again?
Okay. We endorse this Hopkins Creek modification option four you've got there. I would like that changed to one, option one, but without the footpath. The footpath is a substantial cost of that thing and it's not needed.
Do you have a?
No, I want to ask a question about, I just wanted to ask a question about the amendment. If we could get some indication of the cost of that option four with the footpath removed, please. Sorry, option one, you said, with the footpath removed.
Yep. Sorry, do you have a secondary for your motion? Not motion. No worries. Second to councillor Haddad. Is any foreshadowed motion or the question? CEO, can you answer that? Councillor Green?
Will that be fit for purpose with what's being proposed? I guess, yeah, yeah. I guess, and I do thank the Director of Operations in terms of the bus tour that we took last week. It was very informative to actually see the particular areas that we were looking at and the particular strategies that were undertaken and the differences between them. So I just want to make sure that what is being proposed is actually fit for purpose.
Yes, councillor, Mr. Mayor, I'll ask the Director of Operations to again confirm the reasons why the recommendation is option four and not option one, in particular, some of the aspects that were raised at the briefing session.
Thank you. Through the CEO, I guess the answer to the question is all four options are, have some level of fitness for purpose. But our SME has today, and as always, prosecuted option number four on two major considerations for council. And this, again, this is only to do with Hopkins Creek, this one scenario. And the first option is clearly on price. And the section, second option is around water quality of the natural causeway. So the answer is all four are fit for the purpose. It's a matter now for the council to decide in relation to preference of treatment on this site specifically. And what I think was important on the bus tour is that we had a look at all four different options in different environments. And fitness for purpose becomes quite subjective as it relates to the sites, unless we understand them intimately.
Great. Councillor Rhodes?
Yeah, look, I was wondering if there is any merit in a hybrid solution situation where in some instances this we could do and in some instances we could use option four. Is that possible?
Sorry, through the, so yeah, that's exactly my point. In the way we treat these things from moving forward are one of the four options. But this resolution deals with Hopkins Creek and it is site-specific. And your SME has given guidance to council and councilors that option four is the best treatment option, given cost, quality, and that site...
For that specific site.
For that specific site.
Yep. Sorry, councillor, councillor Goodman has his hand up. Sorry for not seeing it.
I'd like to, I'd like to move a foreshadowed motion.
What's your foreshadowed motion?
To move as per the book.
As per the book. That would be an amendment because it's only altering one or the other. So it's not too different. So you're saying you moved for option four. Do you have a secondary for that amendment?
Happy to second that.
Second to councillor Ramon? Recommendation says four.
So, well, Mr. Mayor, we're only talking here about the cost of the installment of the park, isn't it? In-ground or underground or above ground? Is that correct?
Yeah, we had the briefing on this from the subject matter expert, Mr. Muruf Hussein, a couple, a few months ago. Unfortunately, councillor Harrell wasn't at that one, out of all the ones that we sat on, because we know how passionate you feel about this. But yeah, the options are there. This is the most economical, good outcome. It's the most economical. It's the best for the environment. And it provides, it provides a cycle track walkway for the residents. So I'm speaking for the amendment. I'm a fan for option, option four. I think it makes sense and it's good. Yeah, that's my particular views. Did you still want to speak, councillor Goodman, or is your hand still up?
Oh, no, sorry.
No, thank you. Councillor Rhodes? Put it back on.
Upon reflection and the address that was given to the governance committee, it's bringing it all back to me. Unfortunately, I didn't make the bus trip, but I do understand the reasons for option four. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
How it does help, you know, the option for the environment, how it does help the environment.
It's a natural water course.
More mosquito or hell, yeah.
Mosquitoes help the environment. They're part of the circle of life, you know, moves along. Something eats a mosquito, something else eats the things that eat the mosquito and, you know, and, no, don't, it's not discriminating against, it's a circle of life. And it's a lot more expensive.
Well, I know it's more expensive, but it's the one we have to have, you know? We should do it.
Yeah, the natural creek ways look, I don't know. I'm happy to refer to Director of Operations, who can...
Regardless of the cost, Mr. Mayor.
For the fourth time, if you already got through?
Through the CEO. Look, you've got to rely sometimes on the subject matter expert. And what he's saying is to meet the water quality requirements under the, to meet the water quality requirements, option four provides better residual water quality. It does come with different and varying maintenance requirements, as councillor Harrell has brought up a number of occasions.
Yep.
Option one against the requirement?
Option one, it just goes in a drain, straight to the George's River, it doesn't get cleaned. All right. Option four, it gets cleaned before it goes in the George's River and restores the natural creeks and all that lovely stuff to go with it. Okay, great. All right, I will put the amendment as moved by councillor Goodman first for option four to become the motion. So all those in favour of the amendment, please raise your hands. Has the amendment, the amendment. Those against, declare carried. The amendment becomes the motion. All those in favour of the motion, please raise your hands. Against, declare carried. Thank you. Councillor Harrell's name recorded against. Thank you. Committee meeting, traffic committee, page 234, tab 14.
I move that we move them as a whole.
I just, I'm happy with that, but I have a question about, just some clarification about the way the minutes are presented.
Yeah. So are you seconding that?
I've seconded to move them, but I just want to bring attention to something that I've noticed. If we look at the transport meeting minutes, they're page 234, very, very clear, precise. All councillors can read this and know exactly what happened at the meeting, which is very, very good. And then if we go to page 305, which is the Aboriginal Consultative Committee, you know, I can't read this and understand exactly what happened. Like 4.1, the dual naming at Civic Place, committee member Emma Eldridge, I think, gave an update on the dual naming of meeting rooms and spaces at Civic Place. Emma has contacted the traditional cabriagal custodians and discussed, including the caribou cabriagal, well, we don't know what words were included. I just think that there could be more detail provided in the minutes so that we can understand, anybody can understand it from the minutes.
Thank you. It's been noted. Thank you. So I'll put the motion that all the minutes be dealt with as a whole. All those in favour, against, declare that carried. Questions with notice. Koala Killzone, councillor Rhodes?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And look, I thank council for providing all the information. And I am very respectful for the tremendous work that is being done by this council. And I want to thank them and congratulate them. And I know that we will continue to do a good job in this area. But there is further issues that could be further clarified. And there are things about what is holding up the erecting of the wildlife fencing. So if we could just ask the director concerned and possibly get a few of these answers so that everybody is aware of where we're up to and why we're up to such a point. Can we ask some questions through the CEO? What is the holdup on the erecting of the wildlife fence?
Look, I thank you, councillor. I'll take that notice and come back to you. My understanding is, from discussions, we need to be not only looking at that aspect, but we need also be looking at the aspect in relation to the moving of certain signs, the positioning of the signs, bringing, I mean, that all needs to be looked at. Those points were made very clear to me and really good points. And then, of course, we need to be discussing aspects with our neighbouring council in relation to the other side, and that's being undertaken. So I'm happy to take that unnoticed and come back to you.
Well, I'd like to move a motion.
On the record that, you know, I appreciate very much the time you've spent with me to point, you know, these really relevant issues out. And I have taken those into consideration and then working on them. And again, I thank you for that.
Okay, I would like to move a motion considering the situation of, it seems that we're not going to be able to get a fence for another 18 months, I think it is. And the problem that we go is that we go through a lot of breeding seasons with that. That's when these animals are most at risk. We're doing a fabulous job, don't get me wrong. But the motion that I would like to put is that council continue collaboration with Transport New South Wales, Department of Defence, Department of Planning New South Wales, Campbelltown, Sutherland Councils, and advocate for the wildlife fencing to be erected as soon as possible to address the koala breeding season threat of road strikes. I'd also like, point two, explore the opportunities of collaboration with all parties for a combined koala awareness campaign to address the threat of the road strikes in the absence of the wildlife fence during the breeding season. And I would also like for us to advocate for collaboration with all parties to provide an annual mutual education programme based on promoting koala awareness during the koala breeding season each year. I think that collectively, we've got a much bigger voice and we would get, find that a more effective campaign than us doing it singularly as councils. Investigate and replace, if necessary, the koala sign that has been taken from Cumberland Avenue and provide an update to council on progress of collaboration and advocacy for the wildlife fence and possible combined awareness programmes.
Do you have a secondary?
Very happy to second that. Thank you.
Just a point of order. We, it looks like this, we'll need, we'll need somewhere to get the money to do this from. Are we proposing to, I think we're proposing to spend money?
We are already in collaboration and advocacy with these people, so it's not...
We, I'm sure we passed, you know, we agreed or we passed a motion saying that if someone puts up a motion proposing to spend money, they've also got to say where the money's coming from.
Yeah, but where are we spending money on this? Yeah, I agree with you.
So, sorry, if you scroll up.
Continue collaboration.
No, sorry, back down.
Yeah. Councillor, can I recommend maybe if we add a point six, that will solve a council...
Absolutely.
That after all of that collaboration, discussion, et cetera, investigation, that the CEO come back and report to council. And if during that report, there is any money to be spent, that will be part of that report. So if we just add six, that the CEO report back to council after points one and five have been undertaken, I think that would eliminate any concerns.
Thank you.
All right. Happy with that. Cool. Any further discussion? I'll put the motion.
I did hear an interesting thing, that if we feed koalas better and give them more nutrition, apparently they'll become smarter, they might not cross the road. Do you guys hear that? There's not much nutrients in, in...
They could, you give them protein powder and they'll bulk up and the cars hit them and they'll just bounce off them.
Mr. Mayor, I wouldn't mind mentioning that a very wise man once said that koalas cannot read signs, Caress. So I've heard all these comments before. It is not going to distract me from my passion to try and save our poor koalas. Foolish man who said that.
Koalas can't read signs. I think everyone, I'll put the motion all as a favour. Against, I declare carried. Next item is notice of motion, norm zero one, councillor Haggerty.
Where are we?
No, there's no notice of motion. What happened?
There, I think, yeah.
There must be a typo. There's no notice of motions here?
I was, I was busy whipping. Next month, I missed the deadline. I was, I was busy whipping. Next month, don't worry. Watch this space.
Watch this space.
There'll be so many next month as a result.
I'll let you put it into your motion if you like, just to keep the, so you don't break your streak.
That council provide protein powder to the local koala population.
Does that mean we get double the questions?
Do you have any urgent one? Do you have any urgent one?
All right. Plan zero seven, the addendum booklet three, one of them that you have. Purple one, casual 114-page reading. Contributions plan for the Eretropolis.
Well, I'm happy to move it.
Councillor Rhodes, second to councillor Green. Any discussion? Put the motion all as a favour. Against, declare it carried. Okay. Confidential?
Mr. Mayor, so it's with great excitement that I share the exceptional achievements of the 11th Annual Research Excellence Awards, hosted by the Ingham Institute for Applied Medical Research on Thursday, the 12th of October, which was attended by myself and the CEO. The awards celebrated the outstanding research contributions in southwestern Sydney, a testament to our region's commitment to advancing healthcare and research excellence. Professor Anne-Marie Hennessy won the distinguished researcher award for her remarkable strides in the field of preeclampsia academia. Her exceptional career spans over two decades, marked by significant research achievements and an impressive track record of mentoring and supervising numerous higher degree students. Her pioneering work has led to groundbreaking insights into the prevention and treatment of preeclampsia, with her ongoing research poised to have a substantial impact on clinical practice in the coming years. This is something close to my heart, as I have worked in the field of obstetrics for many years and have cared for numerous women and their unborn babies experiencing complications of preeclampsia, including my own sister. Dr. Zijhong Huu Zhou, the recipient of the Early Career Researcher Award, demonstrated exceptional prowess in his research on pancreatic cancer and chronic pancreatitis. His innovative studies have not only contributed to the international research efforts, but have also paved the way for novel therapeutic approaches in the field. Dr. Zhou's groundbreaking discoveries regarding the metastasis of pancreatic cancer cells have drawn significant attention, leading to promising collaborations and potential breakthroughs in treatment strategies. Heena Serene, the recipient of the Higher Degree Student Award, has exhibited exemplary dedication and achievement in her research on brain cancer biomarkers. Her thorough investigation and insightful publications have contributed significantly to the understanding and prognosis of brain cancer. significantly to the understanding and prognosis of brain cancer. Professor Josephine Chow, the recipient of the excellence in teaching award, has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to fostering learning and research development in the southwestern Sydney local health district. Her innovative approach to education, particularly through the implementation of the quarantine research time programme, has not only inspired numerous students but has also significantly contributed to the advancement of research skills among nurses and midwives. Kylie Dundas, the recipient of the best research support award, has exhibited exceptional dedication and contribution to the facilitation and coordination of critical research endeavours within the medical and oncology community. Her extensive knowledge and support have been instrumental in ensuring the smooth execution of research projects, effective collaborations, and the maintenance of ethical standards in clinical trials. Mister Mayor, in acknowledgement of these achievements, I hereby propose a motion to commend and recognise the exemplary accomplishments of the distinguished awardees. I urge councillors to unanimously support this motion to celebrate exceptional achievements of these esteemed individuals and their invaluable contributions to the southwestern Sydney and broader community. Thank you.
Here. Thank you councillor. Deputy Mayor? Good to see some good university educated people in our area.
Smart people in the southwest.
Smart people, indeed. Thank you. So confidential items, conf 01, page 46, page, recommendation on 47. Do we have a mover?
Happy to move that way. If somebody can point out to me, is there a quorum necessary for that committee? There is. And I take it that the new members, the recommendation of the new members, that it would be one representative from each of the member associations, because they are member associations, not individual people. And does the person have to be designated as the attendee, or do we just accept anybody who turns up saying that they're representing that? Just a couple of clarifications.
Councillor, my understanding is that one person turns up, they confirm that they've been authorised to be the representative. Do we ask them for proof of that? The answer is no. We accept them on their word, and we haven't had reason to discover. Interestingly, we've never had two people show up saying that they're both the only representative. If that happens, then we've got an issue.
Well, occasionally it has happened, but we've never drawn issue to it because we've needed people to actually attend this meeting. And the quorum, is it half plus one? I couldn't find that specifically under a heading saying quorum in the chart.
The quorum's fine, through the CEO. Five people.
Five people. Okay. Now, happy to move that way.
Great. I will, did we get?
We need to second that.
Seconder? Seconder? Councillor Green. Any discussion? Put the motion. All those in favour, against, declare carried. Next item is conf 02, page 422, with a recommendation on page 423. Do we have a mover? Move deputy mayor, seconded. Councillor Rhodes, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. Conf 03, page 428.
Question, just the EIS. Could I get, taken on notice, but just what was that for? The EIS, the fourth from the bottom.
Yep.
Just flick me an email about what that EIS was for.
Did you get that? So you want an email, just some information regarding, happy to get it by email?
So the four from the bottom is about the provision of an environmental impact statement.
Impact statements, okay.
Just whatever that was in relation to.
Yep. Do we have that one?
Easy.
All right, cool. Thank you councillor. Do we have a mover?
Yes.
Councillor Rhodes, seconder. Count, deputy mayor, discussion? All those in favour, against, declare carried. Conf 04, page 431, recommendation on page 432. Move councillor Hadid, seconded. Councillor Moon, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. Next item is conf 05, page 436, page 437, recommendation. I'll happy to move that way.
Happy to second, Mister Mayor.
Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. Next item is.
Excuse me, can we please be recorded as voting against?
Yeah, no worries.
Yeah, same.
Who else? So councillor Caliander against, councillor Green against, councillor Hagerty and councillor Hall voted against, Nahemville. Good. Next item is conf 06, page 701, page 702. Move councillor Moon, second to deputy mayor. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. Next item is conf 07, which is in the addendum booklet number four. The one that's only a few pages, recommendation page four. Move councillor Hall, seconded. Seconded.
Kurneeb.
Second to councillor Kurneeb. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. So let me just think for a second. There is the one mayoral minute. Yes.
Bill Crewe.
Yes, I do. Councillors, I move that we move into confidential session to discuss an item in regards to a, not a personnel matter, a personal matter, which if disclosed would give unfair drainage to someone. Let me just pull it up. Section. Hold on.
I'll second us moving into close.
Under section 10A2A of the Law Government Act, against personal matters concerning particular individuals other than councillors. Seconded councillor Rhodes. Any discussion? Put the matter, all those in favour, against, declare carried. Thank you everyone. Thank you for those online. We'll have to move to a closed session just for a few minutes to discuss this matter. If someone could please open the doors. We've got 17 more minutes before he has to go, so we can spend a bit more time. I was off by one hour, Jason. Thank you everyone. We move back to closed session and in closed session, council, move that count. Thanks Ross Whelan for his incredible 17 years dedicated service as principal of Thomas Hanks College, and the point two, which we don't disclose. That being said, the matter was resolved and passed, and there being known for their business, I'd like to declare the meeting officially closed. Thank you.